Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, April 13, 2015. It's my pleasure to call the regular meeting of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Welcome, Commissioners, staff. Welcome. To our listening and viewing audience, we welcome you on board. Thanks for sharing this time with us. Our agenda for tonight's meeting is as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, approval of the minutes from the March 9, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item three, requires a public hearing, an application for Clive's Properties LLC for a CUP for an outdoor seating patio for Clive's Roadhouse Restaurant located at 13050 Aldrich Avenue South. Item four, another public hearing, application from Walzer Real Estate, VLLC, for a PUD amendment to remodel the exterior of the existing dealership with metal panels located at 14720 Buck Hill Road. That's the Mazda, old Mazda dealer. Item five, discussion and solar work plan item. Item six, item six, updates. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Staff?
No changes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Broderick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass on a 2450 vote. Item two, approval of the minutes from the March 9, 2015 Planning Commission regular meeting. Any changes? None from Commissioners?
No.
Staff, none?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Corey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed on a 50 vote. Item three, it's a public hearing and application from Clive's Properties LLC for a CUP for an outdoor seating patio for Clive's Roadhouse located at 13050 Aldrich Avenue South. And with us this evening, Ms. Deb Garrus. Deb?
Thank you, Members of the Planning Commission and Members of the audience. We have a public hearing this evening for Clive's Properties LLC. They are a new restaurant operating in the city. The applicant is here, and he is the owner and operator of the business. The restaurant is located at 13050 Aldrich Avenue, and they've been open now for, I believe, a few months. I've been there a couple of times, and it's always been very busy, very popular, it seems. What they are doing is, they are proposing to install an outdoor seating patio, and that does require conditional use permit under the city's ordinance when you have a property that abuts or is adjacent to residential. The overhead shows generally the location on Aldrich Avenue. You can see that there is single family to the west of the subject site, and that is why this particular application is before you this evening, because we do have a business property adjacent to residential. On the overhead, this gives you kind of a far-out view of Clive's in the center, the residential neighborhood just to the west, and they are fronting on Aldrich Avenue and the interstate. They're just north of Live In Suites and just south of the Halal Market, which is a grocery store. On the screen, you can see that in the lower or southeast corner of the site, the southeast corner of the building, is where the outdoor patio is proposed. It's a relatively small patio. Currently, it is, the area is landscaped area, and they're proposing to have a little over 500 square feet dedicated to this outdoor patio, seating for 30 people. And the proposal is further identified, and I'll go through some of the more details as we go along. This photo was submitted. This is a patio for another restaurant that the owner has. This is in Blaine, and the patio that they're proposing is very similar to this. Small patio outlined with wrought iron type fencing. Will only access the building. You can't get to the patio from the outside. You have to go in through the building in order to access the patio. On this slide, this shows you on the southeast corner or lower right-hand side, the layout of the patio. They're proposing to have, again, 30 individuals. When you have a seating for 30 or less for outdoor seating, there is no requirement for additional parking that's required due to that. This is showing, basically, the main entrance to the building is on the top right as you come in, and then people will have to go through the wait station, which is immediately inside the doors, and then they will bring them out to the patio for seating and service. For the patio, what they're proposing to do is have stamped concrete patio installed, the fencing completely surrounding the area, and then around the perimeter, they're proposing to have landscape planters, which they propose to have flowers for ambiance. The patio will be available for both food service and beverage service. Alcohol can be served out at the site. They do have the required liquor permits already in hand, which would allow this. And the, in addition to that, for the application itself, there are a couple of items that we do need to take a look at. In terms of background for this particular site, this site has been a restaurant for any number of years. It's gone through several different types of restaurants. We have a situation where it had been vacant for a period of time in between, you know, the different restaurants. Actually, back in the mid-'90s, there was a conditional use permit that was approved for outdoor seating, very similar to the location that's proposed. There were to be 40 people in that, so it was a little bit larger. That application, we don't believe that it was ever actually constructed or used for that purpose, so the conditional use permit for that expired. So we have to come back this evening again for an additional conditional use permit. Just want to go back. For the specific proposal, the site area, again, we do not need additional parking. The site parking and green space do meet ordinance standards. They are going to add some impervious surface, which changes the percentage from 70% to 71%. The green space required is 25%. They are, they have more green space, even though they're taking up some of it for the proposed patio. They're at about 29%. And they also meet the 50% perimeter building landscape standard. So there are no deviations or other issues associated with the project in terms of the zoning ordinance itself. In terms of signage, there is a condition that we've included, the, there needs to be a sign posted on the property indicating that alcoholic beverages can only be served in the patio area. They can't be, people can't be having drinks outside of that patio area. That's a very standard, standard condition, not an issue. In terms of the lighting, it's very similar to their other patio. They're proposing kind of a decorative-type lighting. For the most part, this type of lighting should not cause issues in terms of photometrics. Definitely, you will not be able to see that from the residential properties. We did ask and are recommending a condition that if they're putting up something that is not, you know, like a Christmas light or something like that, probably will not have an issue. Other types of lighting, we are recommending that they would need to submit a photometric plan, just to show that they comply. Staff has, really, we're not thinking that there will be any issue, but that is a condition that we've noted. In terms of engineering considerations, there is a drainage and utility easement located along the south property line that's platted as part of the plat that dates back to the early '90s, I believe. There are existing private utilities in that drainage and utility easement. There are electric and underground telephone lines. We have recommended a condition that they obtain written documentation from the private utilities, that they do not have a problem with the patio covering the drainage and utility easement. With that, the city engineer is also recommending that they enter into an encroachment agreement with the city. We don't anticipate that we'll ever need to go in and work on utilities or drainage or that type of thing. It's relatively flat, but it's customarily a practice of the city that whenever something is going to be located within a drainage and utility easement, that we get the encroachment agreement, and that's really a document that just specifies for all parties that in the event, there needs to be work in that easement, that the utilities, the city can get in and do that work. Any reconstruction would be the responsibility of the owner to do that, because they are within the easement. In terms of recommendations, we are recommending the project for approval, subject to five conditions. Exterior sound equipment and music needs to be shut off by 10:00 PM. That's an ordinance standard. Again, a photometric plan, depending on the type of lighting that they are actually going to propose. The encroachment agreement would be required. They need a written okay from the utility companies, and the signage needs to be posted for no alcohol consumption elsewhere on the property. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting at their site about a week or so ago. We did have two of the neighbors attend that meeting, and they are here also tonight. And basically, the types of issues that were brought up were related to primarily issues of trash that blows around sometimes in this area, and then also issues with some trespassing. And prior to the current owner having the property, there was some dumping of materials on site, and actually, the owner did have to spend quite a bit of money to clean the site up from that. With that, though, the property owners feel that they can support the application, and they're here tonight, and they'll probably speak to you during the public hearing. They also had walked the site with the owner, and he is not just an operator, but an owner. So he's in this for the long run. He's in this to run a family-style restaurant. That is something that he is very proud of, and he's worked very hard to actually bring the site up to par. He has, if you go out and take a look, they have cleaned out some brush and tree cover, trimmed that back. They have redone some of the parking lot areas, restripped. They have trimmed up the landscaping around the building, just initially really clean operator of the site. And we are anticipating that with this owner and with them constantly operating, that we should not be experiencing additional problems out there with dumping and that type of thing. During the neighborhood meeting, we did indicate that staff would work with the owner and the neighbors to contact the Live In Suites management for the property to the south and to have a meeting with them, just to make sure that they're aware of some of the issues that have happened in the past and to see what can be done to kind of help, just to make sure that we don't get issues in the future of dumping and leaving materials out on site or things that can blow into the yards of the neighbors. With that, I can stand for questions. As said, both the applicant and a couple of the residents are here and would be willing to address the commission if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus, for your presentation. Commissioners, questions? Ms. Garrus? Thank you. Obviously, did a very good job explaining the circumstances regarding this application. So thank you very much. This is a, this matter requires a public hearing, and so it's my pleasure now to open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this application, please feel free to do so now. As you come up, please mention your name and the address, your home address for the records.
We're just here to support.
Would you like to say something in support? Come on up and...
I'm old-fashioned. I like to sit down.
See, that's what...
I'm right behind him.
You're saying that wouldn't go on record, so it wouldn't be, if you come up here, it'll go on record?
It don't matter to me.
That's okay. Good, good.
Okay. I'm the old-fashioned.
All right. We appreciate that. Thank you for coming, anyway. It's very nice of you.
It's very good to have somebody in that place.
Yes.
Because when you get a vacant building, that's when you get a lot of the problems. But now we got, you know, all the grocery stores, he's been there for two years, he's trying to buy it, and he's been really a great neighbor, too. He seems to be really good, so we still got one more business there to get something moved in there, the old Hurricane establishment, which was Hooters, and then Embers, and Embers before that.
Yes. Do you mind giving us your name?
Dan Fox.
Dan Fox, and your address?
1207 Forest Planning Drive.
Thank you, Dan, for coming and for your contribution. Would you like to say something, sir? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other person would like to come up and address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Commissioners, any...
I guess we're a little scary.
I just wanted to say what a pleasure it is to have an owner involved on the day-to-day operations and the difference it can make.
It's an excellent restaurant. Thank you for coming to the community.
Yes.
Beating there several times.
We're looking forward to a long relationship. Burnsville and Girani communities as well.
Burnsville welcomes you, and we're glad you're here. Okay. If there's no other discussion, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner, move recommendation by Commissioner Broderick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass on a 50 vote. Thank you. This matter will be taken up by the City Council at its next meeting on Tuesday, the 21st of April. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next item in the agenda, number four, the public hearing, application from Walzer Real Estate, LLC for a PUD amendment to remodel the exterior of the existing dealership with metal panels locate, the building located at 14720 Buck Hill Road. And Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This is a PUD amendment. It is a public hearing, and the request is to remodel a portion of the existing Mazda dealership. Here's an aerial photo, or excuse me, image of the location of the property. Here's a aerial photo of the site. What we're looking at is the east-southeast elevation of the property, right in this area. I'll get into some of the details, but there are very minor changes to the south, excuse me, south, north, and west sides of the building. The subject site is Zone B3 PUD, as are the surrounding properties. It's also designated in the comprehensive, comprehensive plan as business, retail, and office. Those uses are consistent with that zoning designation and the comprehensive plan. There's a little bit of history with this site. It has been used as a car facility since the '80s. The original PUD was established in '91. Most recently, in 2001, it was approved for a Chrysler Zuzu dealership, and that is essentially the building that you see here in some of the, some of the images. The PUD is needed to address the use of metal panels on the building, specifically the percentage. The ordinance allows you up to 25% of any single facade to be a metal panel. There's restrictions on other materials. We see these metal panels quite a bit, especially in this neighborhood with similar uses. They're a very clean, modern, durable look, but on this front elevation, if you would, the east-southeast elevation, excuse me, east-northeast elevation, they are exceeding that limitation. They're proposing 64% metal panels. There are no metal panels proposed on the north, south, or west elevation, so we're just talking about that front facade. Here's an image of the existing facility. You can see it's very light in color. There is some rock face block around the base. There's also a rock face block over the service doors on one end. The backs and sides are a combination of the ephesus and rock face block. Those will stay the same. The ephesus will get repainted to give it a fresh look, and this elevation will be converted to metal panels. As indicated in the report, a majority of the facility, or excuse me, a majority of this facade is a black, white trim across the top, and you'll notice the limited use of green. I do have material samples. The applicant's proposing a standard black, standard white. That material gives you a better idea what that green is, just a touch of accent. It is a green that's tied to Mazda, so they wanted a little bit of identity. This wall specifically provides no interior space to the building. It is essentially just a wing wall, about three feet wide and one foot deep, and on the site plan, you can see it right off of this elevation. So it just comes out to provide a little architectural detail to the facility. Again, from the image of the existing building, you can see it is somewhat monochromatic with its whites and grays. This gives it a little bit of color, a little bit of detail. Obviously, the metal panels are proven material. It is, they are widely used in the car dealership arena. There is a small section of windows right above the main entrance that will be removed. These, but staff's comfortable with that. It is still a very pleasing aesthetic design. If you were out to the site or some of these images, you'll notice that this entryway is brought out from the rest of the building, so the front does have a very three-dimensional feel to it, does have a lot of character and unique design features. The applicant is also proposing signage changes to the building. Jumping back, you have Mazda here, Walzer here, and Mazda over here. That will change to Mazda up front with the logo and a Walzer. Just off this page, there will be some service signage for customers entering the site for service. The applicant's proposing only 140 square feet of signage. They're allowed over 1,000 square feet, so they are very mindful of the signage and a very appealing project. The proposal meets the ordinance requirements, except for the use of panels on that single side. Staff considers this a reinvestment into the site. It certainly brings the building up to a more modern image, consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff is supportive of the application. There are no conditions proposed at this time, but I will stand for any questions the commission has.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, questions for Mrs. Slenia?
Yeah, just one.
Commissioner Benke, go ahead.
Thank you. Are they painting the block, too? I don't see it on the...
They are not, they are not proposing to paint the block.
So we do have a base, middle, top character once they're done?
We, not on the, not on the front facade. The block would go down to the base.
The panels would?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me. The metal panels would go down to the base. The existing block where it is on the rear and sides would stay.
Sure. I guess the only other thing is, we keep hearing about the metal panels. Clearly, these are not just simply a piece of sheet metal. They're bonded, they're fairly heavy-duty.
Correct.
Is there a reason why we need to continue to limit?
We do, I think it's twofold.
For the industrial and commercial, I'm not so much the rest of the zoning, but...
Right. I believe it's twofold. One would be the, the quality of the panel, which obviously they're satisfying, and secondarily would be the, the aesthetic appeal or the, the look of the panel. In this part of town, it's very compatible with the area. In a different part of town, it may not be as compatible.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Slenia.
Thank you. And the applicant is here if, should you have questions.
Okay. Okay. This application requires a public hearing. It's my pleasure now to open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this application, please feel free to do so, and as you come up, please mention your name and address for the records.
Good evening. My name is David Phillips. I'm the architect for Walzer Automotive Group. My address is 227 Colfax Avenue North, Suite 100 in Minneapolis. The purpose of this renovation of the facility is to update to the Mazda requirements, as indicated by Chris. The original design, which had the arched entry, is a traditional Chrysler design that you'll still see. We also, as part of this proposal, will be doing interior work to the building to freshen it and give it new life for the next 15 years. It's served Walzer needs for the last 15 years. We're proud to be in Burnsville. We have four dealerships in Burnsville. The ACM, to go to the question, is a very expensive, high-quality material. You'll see it on our Honda store, you'll see it above the windows at the Subaru, and you'll see, see it in a couple different forms on the Nissan that we have. We enjoy the relationship with your staff and with the city here and would respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Just hold on a second, please. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? Okay, none. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other person from the audience who would like to come up and address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, I therefore close the public hearing. Any discussion, commissioners? If there is none, do I hear a motion?
We recommend a council that we approve the project.
Motion to recommend the City Council from Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Corey. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass on a 50 vote. Thank you for coming. This matter will be at the City Council next Tuesday at, that's the 21st of April. Thank you so much, and good luck.
Very much.
Okay. Item number five on the agenda is a discussion, and we're going to be talking about the solar work plan. And Ms. Garrus, welcome back.
Thank you. Let's see here. Okay, Chris, I might need your help here. Okay, here we go. All I have to do is find the... Oh, here we go. There we go. Thank you, Members of the Commission. We have a work plan item that was actually, I think, carryover from last year, and it's related to solar energy... related to solar energy, solar energy systems. And the reason that we wanted to bring this to the commission is, you may be aware, and if not, we'll, we'll let you know here, but the state of Minnesota is really backing renewable energy. And solar is probably the primarily, is probably the primary renewable energy resource that we have that is most applicable in the state of Minnesota. I think that the commissioners had some questions about wind energy systems, and a couple of years ago, we did a similar type of update to wind energy systems, and that involved review by our sustainability team. We do have a sustainability plan that was adopted, and I believe 2009, talks about renewable resources and all sorts of things that the city can do for sustainability. The solar energy part of this is something that you'll be hearing a lot about. The governor, back a couple of years ago, initiated legislation which calls for reductions in carbon footprint for the state of Minnesota, and all of the governments, townships, counties are subject to that. So the information that we're going through tonight is really timely because there has been recent legislation that really provides a lot more opportunities, not only backing producers in the state for solar energy components, but also financial plans and incentives and programs that are available for industry and property owners, residential owners, to invest in solar. So that's why we are here this evening. Both solar and wind energy are identified in state statutes, and they are also part of comprehensive plan requirements by the Metropolitan Council. We do need to include statements that allow for these systems in the city. And as far as the wind energy, primarily working with a number of consultants that assisted the city in developing our sustainability plan. And then also through conferences that staff attended and other research, we put together a proposal for the wind energy systems and adopted revised parameters a couple of years ago for those systems, allowing those, and just bringing the ordinance more up to date. And then here is the solar part of this. One of the major reasons for interest in solar, first of all, for Minnesota, we really have the same solar capacity as Houston, Texas, for example. We don't have the heat, you know, it doesn't get as warm as it does in Houston for the length of time, but actually, the solar capacity is the same. So very interested in that. In addition, the cost for the smaller systems has dramatically gone down. The screen just gives you an example of, you know, where we're talking in 2000, as far as installation costs for these smaller systems. This would be like on a residential home. Just the cost reduction for those units coming down dramatically and anticipated to even come down much further within, by 2016. This is what I referred to earlier in terms of the carbon emissions. By 2015, the goal for the state is a 15 percent reduction, and these are from the levels that were existing in 2005. And by 2050, the goal is an 80 percent reduction in the carbon footprint. The primary way that the state is working to accomplish this that we are seeing is basically working with the utility companies. Excel Energy has a number of programs, and they are very involved in creating solar gardens, and they have a number of different rebates and different energy programs that they will work with. In Burnsville, we are actually only partially served by Excel Energy, and that's primarily the area north of Highway 13, and then there are a couple of smaller areas. The area is shown in purple on the map. The majority of the city, or about two-thirds of the city, is really offered by Dakota Electric. They are starting to get into the solar program because, like Excel and the other utilities, they also need to demonstrate that they're working on renewable energy sources and reducing their carbon footprint. So this just gives you kind of an overview of just generally where these electric areas are. We do have a very small part of the city that is in the Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative. There are a number of cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bad News Heights, that are actively pursuing these larger solar gardens and solar arrays. There are various financing programs that are available that allow cities to now bond if we want to make programs available to local property owners. We now have the ability to bond for those, to allow them to pay for the costs of the infrastructure over time for the solar. In addition to that, there are various groups, like the Port Authority in St. Paul, that also have funding available, and local communities can work through them as well. So there are a lot of funding sources, a lot of money out there, and a lot of research, a lot of new changes that are coming about as we speak, and really have started within the last year. And you'll see, if you haven't heard, you probably will be hearing a lot more about solar installations coming up in the near future. On this screen, this is showing the city of Minneapolis. This is a larger installation known as like a community solar installation, and in that you have got an area where usually it's a large landmass or a number of building tops where these are installed, and then property owners can, can link to that and get a reduction on their own energy costs as part of supporting a program like this. It's not limited to just the property where the solar panels are located. There are also a number of companies that basically are coming in and providing, they'll provide the panels, the materials, they'll set everything up, and then basically others can buy in to that or enroll in a program, and they get reductions on their energy bills or cost savings over time. With solar, the difficult part and the most expensive part are the upfront costs for the installation. Once it's installed, these solar systems usually last 25 to 30 years, and there's almost no maintenance that's associated with them. So the upfront cost is where the initial barrier has been, and that's why the state and some of these cities and other entities have provided for these other financing mechanisms. In terms of where we have some of these, probably our closest one is the Blue Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant, this large area in back. These are all solar panels. There are literally thousands of them. It's a huge array that was installed, covers almost 10 acres for this, and this is providing basically the, the majority of power that's needed to operate that system for the Metropolitan Council. This is just a quick schematic of the plans, but I believe this is installed here within the last two years. And again, for this, just illustrating, community solar can be many different sizes. What I'd like to share with you tonight are just really going through some slides to see what's out there, the types of things that are happening, and then to find out from Planning Commission if you think that we need to look at updating our current ordinance, if there are any things that we should be further researching to bring back to you in the future. In terms of the, the review of this, right now, I did provide in your background the information we have from the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. Pretty much, if you have a residential installation, you can install anything. There really aren't any standards or requirements or restrictions. You need to get a building permit and possibly electrical permit, but it's a matter of right that people can install systems. When we get to the business properties and commercial areas, there, there does, there is a requirement for screening of them, but pretty much, again, pretty much anything goes for that as well. One of the things that the state has done is it's worked through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and others to develop a team, it's called a CERTS team, and this is a team that basically is really involved in the solar energy area or arena. They worked with LHB Associates, which is a consulting firm, to develop a state model ordinance for solar. And many cities are adopting those ordinances, and it's really to set out parameters for solar installations. And we did look at those state requirements as well and some of the other ordinances that are in place, and I'd just like to briefly review those. When we talk about these large community solar projects, they traditionally are in rural areas where you see them the most. This is an example of an installation, gives you a little bit of understanding of the scale of some of these types of panels. This is another array. These happen to be just ground-mounted panels. What happens with these in the winter is that there are different types of panels. Some panels don't operate well undercover, if it's cloudy or if there's snow. Other panels do actually work, or any part that is not covered will also utilize 100 percent of the solar radiation for energy purposes. So that's a big advance that's happened quite recently in terms of solar, which makes it more practical for climates such as ours. The top left just shows a community solar using rooftops. And these types of situations, again, usually you would have a company come in and pay for the installation and then get buy-in from either the local community and/or other property owners to buy into that, to be able to offset their costs over time. This is an example in Massachusetts of a landfill, closed landfill, where they have solar installation. One of the areas that we have, we have several closed landfills and some that are in the process of doing that, so something to consider for Burnsville. And again, just another couple examples. On the lower left-hand side, these are considered to be ground-mounted panels, and just what to bring your attention to is that these can be, remember, they're not regulated now, so they can be of any size, any number of them, any configuration. We don't have any standards in our ordinance to, to deal with those types of things. Rooftop, this is one installation, or a couple, whether it's flat to the roof, but as you'll go along, there are other types of installations which may or may not be appropriate in Burnsville. So when we're talking about these, we're talking about ground-mounted type systems, where they can be located, are they appropriate in all residential districts, single-family, multifamily, all commercial districts? Where would they be appropriate? Are we looking at any screening, size, height restrictions? Those kinds of things are really what this is intended to kind of evoke from Planning Commission or some discussion and ideas. There are new technologies that are coming out all the time. There is thin film, which is photovoltaic film, and I do have a slide that shows that. There are the traditional panels, which these are just a couple of, and there are actual different types of photovoltaic shingles and roofing and siding materials and things that we can, that are out there as well. These are some examples of some pole-mounted energy systems, and these are all over the country. Several of the slides I do have are actually just in Minnesota. But just to give you an idea, you know, it looks like on the top left, they have actually put up some security fencing around that location. Most of them, I don't see that. I don't see any type of security-type fencing in these. The top right is showing one at a ball field. So are these types of things something we want to see in our city parks, possibly schools? You know, those types of things, just to keep in mind. Bottom left is one that's installed in a pole. This is something that you've probably seen out there, some street signs and highway signs would not have these attached for lighting in an area perhaps it doesn't have access to electric, you know, underground wiring, et cetera. And lower right, again, just another example. Some different types of examples, I think, for residential, when we're looking at a Burnsville, possibly the lower left-hand. Again, you know, do we see a need to look at restricting numbers or locations? Some of the ordinances I've seen, such as Woodbury, will only allow these to be located if they're ground or pole-mounted in the rear yards. Other communities in the state model ordinance have no restriction at all. So again, just something to think about. And as we get into these, these may be things that spur maybe some discussion and thought about, maybe we should have some standards. So there are a couple in here that are kind of funny, but again, just ideas of different types of systems, and these are all pole-mounted systems. And this is a little bit, in 2013, that's when most of the legislation took place related to solar and really expanding opportunities and financial programs. This one I like, it's a solar space-hitting, looking at, again, there's a potential for all sorts of, all sorts of installations out there, so just, just something to keep in mind. We just thought that was kind of, kind of interesting. Just in terms of the uses for solar, generally, they're used for either hot water or hot air for homes and businesses. There are different types of solar. Most of these slides are active solar systems. There's also passive solar, which would be, you know, when you're putting in lights or you've got, you know, glass panels, things that aren't connected to some type of an electric or, or utility grid but just function. Is there a need, you know, for regulation or standards for the different types of solar? This is just a quick guide. Primarily, when we're looking at the type of equipment, you'll have equipments very similar to an electrical-type panel that you'd have for a home. They're not much different in size. You just have probably a couple more panels that would be affiliated with the solar project. They can be installed on the exterior of the home or on the interior. This is, again, a very quick example. This is very standard. These types of solar systems have been around for years and years. It's just that they're getting to be a lot less expensive and more productive and make a little bit more sense today than perhaps they did years ago. This is a design guideline, if you will, from the state model ordinance, and it's just talking about the types of installations to consider. On the top one, we've got a flush-mounted system on the right hand. On the left, this allows to, again, gain maximum sun reflectivity, et cetera. This is one where they, they put some, changed the tilt from the roof line. Is that something that we think is, is an issue or not? The lower one is more of a business-type situation. Again, you've got mounted systems that are kind of shaded or screened by parapet wall. These may or may not be screened depending on the distance. We do have sightline standards for rooftop equipment for other type of mechanical equipment. Should that apply to solar? Not? Yes? That's kind of the question. In these installations, actually, I believe that the lower one here is actually a Minnesota installation, and this one is part of that. But you see, you know, typical rooftop panels here on the top right. They're closer, you know, to the peak of the roof. Some ordinances limit, you know, they'll only let you install at the peak or below. Some allow it to go above the peak. Is that something that we think would be needed for Burnsville? On the installation here, this is looking at it from the outside. This is looking at it from underneath. And again, the typical types of metering that would be associated with that. On this, this just shows some different types of. On this, this just shows some different types of roofing equipment that's involved. You can have panels that actually lay flat on the roof. These are more or less like any other type of shingle, if you will. Here, I don't think we have too many of these here, but they do in California and other states, so that's very popular. This is probably the most typical type of install, you'll see up here, it's a roof-flat mounted type of system. And then here, just to show that they do have brackets, there are other types of systems other than panels, panels are just the most common. They do have ones that are just like cylinders, which collect the energy and send it forth. So again, is there a need in terms of the types of systems, you know, do we want to look at? Some okay, some do you want to look at, just leave it as is, that's where we go. Few more ideas here, this one on the right-hand side is actually in Edina. It's a, on an accessory building, a lot of the ordinances, our ordinance does require a residential to be installed to be setback, the same setbacks as the principal structure. Could allow them to be on accessory structures too, as Edina does. These are flat roof mounts. On the top left, this one I bring your attention to because they actually modified the roof line to add panels. Is that something that we think is okay or not? I believe that these are panels in this location as well. Some of these systems, I don't know that any of these specifically show it, but some of these systems, the panels actually also radiate so that they get the maximum sun exposure as the sun is moving across the sky. I think most of the time you'll see stationary ones such as these, we okay with? Something like that is an install on mechanical equipment, this is more of like a skylight looking thing, but it's actually a solar panel. Again, this shows one type of panel system that really looks like very modern rooftop-type material. But that is a solar, solar panel or rooftop equipment, if you will. These types of things, again, just, you know, do we want them to be flush-mounted? Or do we have an issue with them being raised, such as this? Number of panels, do we have issues with that? This is a ground-mounted installation, which probably, if everybody did this, nobody would have any, have any issues. But again, are we looking, you know, should we be looking at the yards that they're located in, any setbacks, those types of things? Screening or landscaping integrated? And these are just a couple of different installation. And this blue panel again is very similar to what we saw in a previous slide. This one, we have a couple of different kinds of panels. Again, it's kind of getting at the, you know, at the look and the function and how we do or do not want to regulate these. This installation, similar to the earlier one we had, except this is at the ground, you know, patio level. And this is just looking up from that panel system. They do have wall-mounted systems. Generally, the panels are going to be dark and the solar, those systems are darker because that's what attracts the, for solar energy. So you are looking at a darker type application, do we have any issues with that in terms of color compatibility, et cetera? These are just a couple of different multifamily type applications. And again, some of the equipment, sometimes you can't see, see these from the ground at all. You know, other times they incorporate them. Here, they don't, you know, have too much, they don't stand out too much because of the darker roof. Is that an issue or not? The panels have come to a point where even if it's cloudy, they do still operate and operate at a pretty high capacity if you have the newer systems. This one I just included because this is an actual apartment complex in St. Paul. And what I bring your attention to is here, it's a rooftop install, but the panels are set up instead of being flush-mounted with the roof. Again, just something to consider. Here's, this happens to be a wall-mounted system, Minneapolis Police Department, it's the black. In case you didn't know, it's the black area. Again, just usually for commercial, they're doing the same thing, operating with hot water or heat systems. These are, this is another system on an industrial building. And some of the ordinances, the locations are restricted on, you know, which sides of the buildings that they're allowed, if there needs to be screening or not. In quite a few of the ordinances, if nobody can see it, not an issue in terms of material. This just happens to be one more of an industrial-type application. And this system down here, this is an example of a different system than a panel. This is where you've got actually these tubes that have either type of gas or liquid that's heated by the sun and that's the system that's installed. In these modules, they call these building-integrated modules in the model ordinance. And in these, you really, you know, it's, it looks like any type of glass-type material that we'd see. These are the internal sides of that, you can see the panels are these darker gray ones. If they're building-integrated, do we want to look at them, do we need to look at them, or are they just okay to be installed? So another example of, these are kind of awning-type installations, but it's an entire building wall with that. Here again, we've got the rooftop installations, but they're visible, they're not flat-mounted, but pitched. These are all different, they look kind of like windows perhaps from a distance, but they're actually built-in panels within this. Awnings as an example. This just shows an example of like a parking-type structure, perhaps a transit-type structure with panels. These are the wall-mounted, a couple of different applications. This one on the lower right, I don't know where that's at, but it's kind of funky. But just know that there are all sorts of different panels out there. So that's, that's kind of why we're having the discussion. Just another shot of some different building-integrated systems. Do we want to look at other types of things? We don't currently have structures like this in our parking lots, but maybe is that something that we would be interested in? You know, maybe some of the parks, maybe City Hall. Should they be allowed in, you know, private, private properties, any issues with that? This one here is probably one of the better building-integrated, this whole surface here is solar panels. Here's another example, wall-mounted. This is Ontario, Canada. Again, this is an entire solar system application for an entire wall. Is that something that we would be okay with? Again, generally, they're going to be black or very dark color for, for the types of panels. This is another one, Toronto Airport. And this, this again is, you know, one of these ones that's standing upward, not, not mounted directly onto the roof. Should there be any limitations on that type of thing? Here is one, again, this panel, this is a different type of panel system than the traditional, traditional panels. But it's also a photovoltaic system, this happens to be a rooftop installation. And this is probably the best picture I have of one of these other types of systems that isn't panel. And just know that there are multiple looks to these, they vary by manufacturer and the type of use. So all of those are, are applications. These also, wall and rooftop. Another one, student union at a college. We kind of looked at that in terms of parking-type things. The reason that I'm showing you this, this gives you an idea, these are actually solar shingles. And on the bottom, this is an illustration of what that, what the actual shingle looks like. On this one, this darker area is film that's installed on the building. It's a material that is available out there, one of the newer types of materials. Is this something, again, that, that we would see as acceptable or any issues with at all? This is just another interior of a building with, kind of showing integrated panel systems. These next few slides are going to be actually kind of a design guideline that's used by, I, I don't remember exactly where I got this. But what they did is they basically show different types of installations with kind of the pluses for the things that the community thought was acceptable, the minuses for things that they really don't want to see. And again, just some ideas to stimulate thought. These are solar panels on this roof. Here, in this community, they thought this was okay to have the panels installed here. Basically because it's a uniform, one solid set of panels as opposed to the one on the bottom here. They left some off for some of the, around, some of the rooftop equipment. You know, again, any of those issues or not? Some ordinances will require things like these, these triangle sections so that you have, you know, a clean line. Some, doesn't matter, they can install them anywhere. This is, you know, a panel system where everything's kind of uniform and together. Here in this community, they didn't like the appearance of this being broken up by the vents. Now, we saw the solar shingles. Again, just some pluses and minuses from what they saw and just some of the potential, and we've all seen them. So you know, at some point, somebody's, somebody's going to want to do something fun, so. I just wanted to show you one that gives you an idea in terms of when you're up close. You know, a typical flush-mounted, even though it's called flush-mounted, you are going to have probably some space in there. It's not going to be flat against the roof because they do need to, they do need to actually attach these to the roofs in these circumstances. This one they didn't like because it was not flush-mounted, I don't like to, they didn't like to see those panels. This one, I don't know if it shows up very well, but it's actually a ground-mounted installation here. I don't know that anyone would have any issues with that, it's, doesn't seem to be an eyesore or anything of that sort. Another type of, just with the piping underneath, heights, et cetera. I'll just go through these quick. You know, are we okay with upright, do you want to see these types of things, flat installations? And the last are just some other ones to think about because some of these are out there. But there are solar lights, there's also solar that's being used for different types of things like signage. This one is a solar panel for Starbucks. You have solar panel, again, providing the electric for the signage, here the solar panel is on top. Just to give you an idea of some of the things that are out there in other parts of the country. Really who's doing a lot of work in this is Germany, they're very much a leader. They have a tremendous amount of solar that's developed in that country, so some of these are international photos. Again, just other ideas. This one's probably my favorite, this is in a billboard, it's a power plant, the solar panels are installed on top. But again, just different types of solar, you know, lighting for the back of a signage, would we have any issues with something like that? This is actually an installation that's in Burnsville. They put this in probably about five or six years ago. When you drive down, I believe, I'm not sure, I think this is Portland, you really can't see these because they're set back a distance from the edge. There's not a parapet wall here, but just because they're located closer to the center of the building, you can't see them. The other thing that's happened very recently is that these solar panels can be installed without any puncturing of the roof, the roof membrane. There are systems that can actually just set on top with like sandbags so that you don't have the issue of water and, and other things. They do have to consider load and, and that type of thing, but there's actually not a need to puncture the roof line. And this is our last one of the Burnsville Transit Station where we've got solar. And even though our ordinance says that it has to be screened, there is landscaping that's around this, but it's not really screened. You know, is this something that is still okay, do we see a need, you know, where we need to look at some standards for these types of things? That's really about it. So with that, we really wanted to just have the discussion with the Planning Commission, find out your thoughts, any suggestions, any ideas that you have. We will be bringing this to the City Council Work Session in May and just providing them basically with a summary of the, what the results are of our meeting tonight. And go forward from there, if there's a need for ordinance updates or amendments, we'll publish those and can go forward on that. If you'd like to see more research or more information, we can do that too. So it's really open for discussion and your direction.
Thank you, Ms. Garris, for that very exhaustive presentation on the solar energy. I'm pretty sure that commissioners would have questions and comments and it's helped if we can work with tonight to give some direction to staff as to whether we can come up with something for the City Council Work Session and even to bring back to us. So just open it up, we'll start, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A great presentation, and I guess it really shows what we need to think about here as we go down the road, we don't have much on the books. But my first thought, I'd like to see that model ordinance, can we get a copy of that sometime, that LHB did? I think that'd be a great place to start.
I mean, I, I would also like for the commission to go to Germany and, and look at some of those things. I think, no, I was just joking about that. I think if we get that model thing, it will help us to see, to make it clear, there's so much that was presented to us. I mean, I have questions, I mean, this is, I endorse the solar energy concept. We don't have too many of those in Burnsville at this time, but with the incentives and the grants and so on that are available, who knows, this thing can take off. And if it does, since we don't have any restrictions on, on how they can go up and what can be up there, it can be a mess. We will have to put our hands around it and come up with some directions so that people just don't go out there and do any kind of thing in residential area. I mean, I don't know, are these things dangerous? For example, you see the grounded, ones in the ground. Do we have to be careful about children, animals that get hurt, I'm not sure about that.
There, there are actually some installations in Europe that they're looking at. They do have some impact on birds and their different patterns. Other than that, it's a fairly, I think, safe type of installation. It's, you do have to, if you're going to do a pole-mounted type application or roof-mounted, you do still need to get a building permit. You need to show that, you know, that everything will be attached according to engineering specifications, that the electrical needs to be hooked up, you know, according to state codes. So with those types of things, there really should not be, it's not like a cell tower that you're getting radiation from. It's really a collection unit. And for most of it, the components are for the most part really inside the building or just like any other meter that you'd have on the house.
And finally, one of the things that you mentioned about the dark colors, the darker it is, it attracts more energy, right?
Usually there, the panels so far, just the way that the technology is, usually all dark.
I'm, I'm concerned about the various patterns that we I'm, I'm concerned about the various patterns that we saw. I mean, some of them look neat and from the street or from neighbor's house, looks normal. Others look like a patchwork of things. If my neighbor's going to put that up on his or her roof, I'll be concerned because I got to look at it every day. So those are the things, those are things I think we need to give some direction to staff so they can include in the recommendations.
And there is not a specific timeline that this needs to be done. So, you know, really, we're, it was a work item and it's really up to the planning commission as to how you want to proceed.
The other one that caught my eye was, I saw, what did he do wrong? Somewhere in front yards. I mean, I can't imagine going through a street in Burnsville with seeing those in the front of houses. So I, one of the first thing I would say, they should not be in the front of homes. I mean, I don't mind if it's a school or even business. We want, we have our regulations that are very clear and tell us you cannot have certain things that run the business, you know, so you can view it from the main thoroughfare and from the street. We ask people to have hedges and those kinds of things to protect people from the streets seeing them. Those are the kinds of things that are passing through my mind that I would like to be addressed. Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Chair. And I guess in addition to the model ordinance, I was thinking that one, and I'm not sure which, which fits the best, but, you know, when installation is done, that it has to be done through either a PUD or CUP or something. One of the two, whichever is most appropriate so that for, you know, what the chair has just talked about, you'd have some control over it. So, you know, especially as this is getting started where it's new and you're going to see innovative things that are good and some that are probably really bad, as demonstrated, so that you would have control over the front yard, for instance, versus the backyard or screenings and stuff like that, depending on what, you know, that the ordinances will be. But seems to me that would be the first step of gaining control where if they have to come through the process, at least you have, get suggestions and have to work with you, you folks and that sort of thing to certainly make it at least initially palatable.
Thank you, Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Banky?
I designed my first one in 1977. There's about a half a dozen solar houses in Burnsville. Couple down by 150th Street, one on the east side of Judicial. You really can't tell that they're solar. These are more classic passive solar houses. I think anybody that invests in that kind of a design needs to be protected because they've done a pretty healthy investment in their, in what they're working on. The most recent one I did was a home on Edina where they were just solar-ready, solar for, you know, for panels. I thought that the examples shown of the solar shingles, you know, clearly done appropriately that fits, fits, you know, a house. It really doesn't change the character. But when you start getting into a pole mount or a ground mount, you know, those clearly are not normal design features. And it feels like that there can be a method of, of saying that, okay, this, this is really integrated well and staff handles it because it's done well. And yet, when you get into something like a pole mount or, or, you know, whatever, you know, we're, even currently, we have a collection device with similar equipment conform to the same yard area as principal structure. So front yards really aren't in play unless the house is set back from the minimum front setback, which doesn't happen frequently, but could. So I think, you know, clearly anything that, that happens here is probably going to, you know, on the fronts of the houses is probably going to, you know, have to be integrated into the structure. Under the B1 and I districts, there's a, there's a caveat here that says, "Designed to be compatible with architectural treatment of the principal structure." And, you know, that could be something that goes into residential. Doesn't have to mash, doesn't have to blend, it just simply says compatible. You know, compatibility is subjective, but yet having a CUP or a PUD would allow a review of it and comment. And I think, you know, that's, that's really where I think we have to start. I think one other thing to keep in mind is the technology is changing dramatically.
Yes.
I saw a clear solar cell two weeks ago. There, it's coming. So, I mean, at that point, you know, some of this stuff is just not going to happen for us because it'll be, it'll move beyond where we're at with our ordinances. Same thing with wind. I brought something I'll share after the meeting, but there's a, just the technology just moves too quick and I think that there are enough people out there with a lot of good ideas. And as they come online, we're going to find that the ordinances are going to fall behind very quickly anyway.
I, I mean, I agree, Commissioner Banky, as long as it does not change the character of the building or, or the neighborhood. I mean, one of, one of these that is not well-placed, well-installed can change the entire neighborhood and as long as it doesn't change the character, I mean, I don't mind. Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to build a little bit on, on Commissioner Banky's statement about how the technology is, it can be in advance of our ordinance. An item I'd like to maybe discuss further and have investigated would be the end game of these things. I'm not so concerned about the residential installations, but primarily like a community garden, solar garden. I mean, what happens when that system is no longer operating? I mean, to embed in our ordinance some way to, to remove, you know, that infrastructure or at least prevent it from being an eyesore or some type of a, a problem for our community, I think, if there's some way we can look at that and discuss that further.
Yeah. Proper disposition of, of the material, too? Yes, Commissioner Bradrick?
Okay. Just a couple of things, I wanted to clarify, something Commissioner Banky said, almost everything that we saw today was active solar.
Yes.
So, from a, from a passive solar standpoint, there's really nothing that we would get involved in. Doesn't...
Access to sun.
Okay, but windows and so, you know, it should be integrated in the building. I do, Commissioner Thomas, I, I don't know if, if we believe we've already got enforcement here, but I did write down code enforcement. The best example I had was the, the home where the panel was, the guy was standing up front and the panels on the, and had, the house hadn't been painted in 10 years. I, I don't, you, you, some of the really old, early adopters, you can tell that the panels have just sort of passed on and aren't being used. How do we go forward from a maintenance standpoint once they've exceeded the useful life and can they be moved from the building was one point. If it's appropriately integrated into the building, I, I think that's something that could be handled at staff level. Now, we spent a fair amount of time recently on building standards and, and do those need to be adjusted to work a, to work a, a panel into them? I, I do agree with other commissioners that it needs to come in front of us if it's, if it's not attached to the building or if it's at a different elevation of the building, if there's something varying from the building, I think that needs to come to us. I do think we need to get ahead of this. I'm responsible for a property that sits on 16 acres with, I've got 150,000 or 200,000 under roof and I'm contacted at least twice a year by companies that are willing to manage the process for me, put the panels on the roof and help with the rebate. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of people out there talking to people right now. Also, to Commissioner Banky's point, I had the opportunity a couple of years ago to tour an apartment complex at one of the University of California. It was a private housing development that was net zero. And they had done an amazing job of integrating it and the only stumbling block they had, they had oddly enough underestimated the amount of power that a college student could generate, could use. And there had to be some re-engineering done and that's where they implemented the carports. We don't see a lot of those here in our climate, but they ended up putting carports covering all of the parking lots and then they doubled the, and you couldn't tell they were shingled with the shingles. And it was an amazing installation and then they were actually back to generating power for the grid for a rather large apartment complex that was full of students that couldn't turn lights off and were running iPads and whatever else it was. So, those would be my thoughts. I think we've got to, we've got to be able to maintain it. I think if it's integrated into the building and it's, fits the structure, hopefully we could have something happen at a staff level. And then it would need to come to some sort of CUP or some process where if it's at a different elevation or a, I did like the thing you're going to bring back to us with the pluses and minuses, kind of like we did with the structure review. This is good, this is, this is bad.
Yeah, we also need to, thank you. We also need to add that part that Commissioner Thomas spoke about, the end, the end game, when, when its service is not being used anymore and what do you do with it? Especially, I was, I'm thinking about community gardens and, you know, solar gardens and those kinds. If it's in a house, obviously people might take care of it, but if it's in a garden, all the, those who are interested in garden are gone and the, this solar system is there and it's not being used, they need to take care of it. Are you getting things to?
Yes.
Everything we have in place for commercial, I think it's good. I mean, if it's hidden from view and it's on the roof and the parapet wall covers it like the, if the, the same thing for HVAC.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I like when we can have something that matches our other...
It's mechanical equipment, no matter what.
Yeah.
So, you know, you know, perhaps because it is, it needs to be visible, that, that may need to come into residential as well. I, I think one other thing that I think we have to keep in mind here is that it, it is good and I think that needs to be encouraged as opposed to discouraged. But yet, you know, I think we do have to keep in mind that some of, some of these are probably more desirable than others, so I'm trying to figure out how to encourage them. For example, you know, a ground mount solar garden is basically going to use up land. Now, clearly we're into ownership rights in that situation, but one that covers a parking lot has multiple uses. It eliminates some of the heat gain from the asphalt, so the heat island effect drops off, and yet you're using that same area for, for solar gain. So, you know, maybe, maybe at some point, as we move forward and need to experience some of this stuff, there might be a point system or something that they're analyzed by where they can, you know, the ones that have more benefit are encouraged.
We have worked very hard to come up with standards for our housing and even our business districts. And, you know, I don't think we need to, some of these solar energy plans I see can be conflict with some of our current standards. I agree with you fully that we need to encourage solar energy and solar use, but at the same time, we have to come up with a happy medium, that we don't sacrifice standards for this or vice versa. Anything else?
One other thing I saw, too, is that there was a, there's a pavement, a solar pavement now, too.
Interesting.
And it's, you can drive on it.
Wow. Okay.
I think it's Dutch.
Deb, Chris, you guys okay with so far?
I think so.
Okay. So what's, what's the next plan? Are we going to come back another discussion before it goes to the city council?
That's up to you. If you'd like to do that, we certainly...
I would prefer that because there's things that we would, I mean, this is a start, in my opinion. This is a start. We get that document and come back and we can, you know, sink our teeth into it a little bit more.
I think one of two things, if we, you can bring it back to us or if you, if a timing doesn't work, you, we could probably, at least part of us could attend a work session and have kind of a joint discussion, I think.
Yeah, we would definitely, anyone who couldn't hear.
If the, if the timing doesn't work, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, flexible for that. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, let's move on. Next item, six, updates. Any updates, commissioners?
None for me?
Just a comment. Very nice job by staff on the old Office Depot building.
Yes, 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 yes.
The red stripe is gone, there's awnings, there's some color to it.
Very little update.
Yes, it was, that was money well spent, time showed.
I, my only question is the signage. I'm not sure if they have over, gone overboard with signage or that.
Because the building's so big, they are, they're well within their, their signage.
Looks nice.
Good. Before we close, I just want to thank commissioners for having a very successful meeting tonight and for giving directions to staff on the last item that we discussed. Staff, thank you, did an awesome job there, especially in this discussion we had and Chris, of course, on your presentations, too. Thank you so much. Thank you to our listening and viewing audience for joining us.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I do have two updates I just want to mention in front of you is the agenda for April 27th. That is, like always, a little bit subject to change based on the discussion we had tonight and if we can get the solar back to you. There is also a joint work session with the city council I'm supposed to inform you of and I just need to find the date that I cannot remember. Hold on one second.
Well, as long as it's not tomorrow night, I think we're okay.
It is not. So tentatively, we had the solar going to the council on May 12th and that was with the planning commission attending that. So we'll get back to you on, on how we want to do that.
Yeah.
Whether we come back to you again or push it out.
Did we ask him any questions, Deb?
No, I think that's great. Like I said, it's really an open book and, you know, we want to encourage it. It's something that's being encouraged by the state. It's a great industry, a lot of things will be happening, so I just wanted to show you some of the, some of the different things that are out there and should we, should we regulate? We don't have to, you know? And I think the discussion tonight gives us a really good idea of direction to go.
Thank you so much. Thanks again to our listening and viewing audience for joining us. Our thanks, commissioners? Yes?
EDC had mentioned a possible joint meeting as well. Had you heard anything about that?
I have not. I haven't heard anything further.
Okay. Thanks, commissioners. Thanks, staff. As you know, the planning commission and members and staff work very hard to make Burnsville the best place to live, to work, to own a business and to shop. We work very hard, we all live here, so we take pride in doing that. Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Move, Commissioner Bradrick, second Commissioner Corey. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 27th. Those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
On a five-zero vote. Good night, stand adjourned.